Good evening, everybody, and thank you so much for joining us. This is the Commissioner meeting of August 10th, 2022, at Sussex County Community Colleges Performing Arts Center here in Newton, New Jersey at 6:00 P. M. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask Terry to please call the roll.
Commissioner Carney.
Here.
Commissioner Fantasia.
Here.
Director Pisano.
Here.
Commissioner Space.
Here.
Commissioner Yardley.
Here.
Everybody's here. I'd like to ask if you can please rise with us for a moment of silence and a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, P. L. 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, P. L. 1975, has been made by regular mail and email, such notice being submitted on January 5th, 2022, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex located at 1 Spring Street in Newton, New Jersey, to the following: The New Jersey Herald, The Star-Ledger, W. S. U. S. Radio, and W. N. N. J. Radio, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, we'd like to remind you all to please remute, please mute your electronic devices. Item five on our agenda is the approval of our agenda. Resolution 13S has been slightly amended, and copies are available to the public. Copies of Resolutions 14A and K, listed as title only, are also available to the public. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Item six on our agenda, our proclamations portion. We do have recognizing Senior of the Year, which will be announced tomorrow at the Sussex County Fair, so that proclamation will be read and presented there tomorrow. Do we have a motion to adopt the proclamation we have this evening?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Space moves. Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Item seven is our public hearings. 7A is our final adoption of ordinance 2209. This is a capital ordinance providing for improvements to various bridges in and for the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, and appropriating $2,059,133 from grants received or expected to be received from the NJDOT Trust Fund to pay for the cost thereof. Do we have a motion for the public hearing to be opened?
Still moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yardley seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Is there anyone present to be heard regarding this ordinance? Hearing none. Is there a motion that the public hearing be closed?
Still moved.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Now, can I have a motion that this ordinance be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this ordinance as finally adopted, and also post the same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center?
Still moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves.
Second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? Terry, can you please call the roll?
Director Pisano.
Yes.
Commissioner Space.
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley.
Yes.
Commissioner Carney.
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia.
Yes.
Item carries. Item eight on our agenda is our first public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and maintain a six-feet social distance with other attendees. When you arrive, please state your name, your municipality, and the agenda topic for the record. Do I have a motion to open the floor for our first public comment regarding agenda items only?
Still moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Is there anybody who wishes to be heard for our first public session from the floor regarding agenda items only? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close the floor for public comment?
Still moved.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Item nine, we'll move on to commissioners' comments, and we'll start, as always, to my left with Commissioner Space.
Thank you. Woodland Behavioral and Nursing Center update, also known as Andover Subacute. I am pleased to finally be able to say that the resident census at Woodlands is zero as of today. All of the residents have been successfully discharged to other facilities. Maintenance staff will be remaining on-site for a period of time to manage the needs of the building. The closure date of the facility will be finalized as Atlantic Health transitions out of managing the daily operations of the nursing center. Due to collaborative efforts of Atlantic Health, the New Jersey Department of Health, and the local employment and training services, most of the staff have been able to obtain jobs. All partners involved worked with the state and other long-term care facilities to assist in job placement for the individuals who were employed at Woodland. I know that everyone has waited a long time to hear that the residents are finally out of there, and they are in better place, better place, a better place now, and hopefully much safer with better treatment. And that's just great news. Skylands Ride Transit. There is a resolution on the agenda this evening for Skylands Ride to receive two new buses from grant funding provided through the Division of Senior Services. These new buses are vital for transit to continue to provide trips for life-saving treatments such as dialysis, medical appointments, employment, job training, grocery shopping, and other essential services for Sussex County residents. To schedule transportation or to obtain additional information about Skylands Ride, please call 973-579-0480. I attended a Zoom about a study with Skylands Ride and possibly increasing and changing the routes better so that we can service more people throughout the county, so we'll be interested to hear a lot more on that. Senior Farmers Market Voucher Program. The Division of Senior Services continues to operate the Senior Farmers Market Voucher Program through September 30th, 2022. The program provides vouchers to Sussex County seniors to purchase fresh fruits and vegetables at local farm stands. To date, 295 farmers market vouchers have been distributed so far this year. This is a 23% increase compared to the past two years at this time. Vouchers are available at the Division of Senior Services Monday through Friday from 8:30 to 4:30 for specific qualifications, and to apply, please contact Senior Services at 973-579-0555. The New Jersey State Fair, the Sussex County Fairgrounds, Augusta, New Jersey, Division of Health. The Division of Health, Environmental Health, reviewed and inspected 94 food vendors at the New Jersey State Fair Sussex County Farm and Horse Show. Health provides this essential service to ensure that our residents can safely enjoy all of the food and refreshments that this festive, that this festive event has to offer. I'll also say that I personally know how effective that they are and everything that they look for, as my business had their inspection like two weeks ago, and any business that you attend, you go to, that has a satisfactory sign, you know that they've been inspected, and they do a very thorough job. So I'd like to thank them for that. Sussex County Day, Sussex County Fairgrounds, Augusta, New Jersey, the Division of Community and Youth Services, Health, Senior Services, Social Services, and the Office of Transit will be represented during Sussex County Day on September 18th at the Sussex County Fairgrounds in Augusta, which is hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. The divisions will have a wealth of information available to share with visitors about the various programs and services available to Sussex County residents, in addition to giveaways, COVID-19 educational materials, and 600 rapid test kits to distribute to the community. Staff will also be available to answer questions. And yesterday, I attended a roundtable discussion that was hosted by Senator Cory Booker here at the college. He spoke with local veterans service groups about the 15 million expansion of a federal program that provides housing assistance for low-income veterans and their families. It was part of his stop in his 21-county tour in New Jersey, and Sussex County was yesterday, so that was pretty interesting. I also attended today, along with Commissioner Yardley and Carney, the salute to the veterans at the fairgrounds, which was a very nice presentation, and we all here support all the veterans, and we thank everyone for their service. That's a bet. And that's about all I have today.
Thank you, Commissioner Space. Commissioner Fantasia.
Thank you. This evening, I'm going to start with some quick COVID updates. As usual, the Sussex County Division of Health is offering COVID-19 vaccinations. The next upcoming clinics, the first is Liberty Towers, 32 Liberty Street in Newton, on Wednesday, August 17th, from 3:00 to 6:00 P. M. And then at the Health Division, Office of Public Health Nursing on Wheatsworth Road in Hamburg, that is August 24th, that's a Wednesday, from 3:00 P. M. to 6:00 P. M. You can go online and complete your consent form in advance, and our public health nursing continues to provide homebound vaccinations. The free at-home COVID-19 test kits continue to be offered through the program between LabCorp and Vault in the County of Sussex, so those are still available. So to give you an idea as to where we are in terms of COVID in comparison with the state, the most recent COVID-19 activity level report, Sussex County is listed as medium, yellow, we're in the yellow, where a majority of the state are at a high level, which is orange, and there's only one county that's green, and that's Warren County. So Warren County has the lowest, Sussex is right behind them as far as low numbers. For the past week, we're reporting about an average of 40 cases per day. Now, for hospitalizations, looks a little promising. In June, we had 49, July 35. So far in August, we have nine, so hopefully we're seeing a trend that we would like to continue with severity of the illness. And if you would like any more information on COVID-19, please visit our website, sussex nj.us. Now, I'd like to talk for a moment about the Arts and Heritage Council. I've explained that they're very active as of late, and one of the highlights, what they do, is different programs for senior citizens. So the Sussex County Senior Citizen Art Show, and that's open to artists who are age 60 and older and are residents of Sussex County, whether you're a professional artist, a non-professional artist, a novice, you can enter your artwork, and there will be first-place winners in each of those categories, and you can qualify for the 2022 New Jersey State Senior Citizens' Annual Juried Art Contest and Exhibition. They have to get your entries in quickly. The entries close Monday, August 15th, at 4:30, and you can submit digital work. However, digital work cannot be judged at the state level, so if you wish to have your work judged, it has to be tactile, you have to drop it off at the Arts and Heritage Office, which is on Spring Street, 133 Spring Street in Newton, and those dates are Friday, August 12th, from 11:00 to 4:00, Saturday, August 13th, from 1:00 to 4:00, Sunday, August 14th, noon to 3:00, and Monday, August 15th, 11:00 to 4:30. So since the state competition is returning to the live exhibition, only in person is eligible to be judged at the state. However, the Arts and Heritage Council will display all digital work that our residents did submit, and for consideration for awards here in Sussex County. So we always look forward to that, and if you are an artist, a budding artist, embrace your inner Bob Ross, and please, please submit some work. As far as the fair, I was able to go on Saturday and Sunday. It was, you know, cool, not, not hot at all there whatsoever. I think we were roasting. We looked like we had showered after we were there for about 10 minutes, but we fought the good fight, you know, and we were able to see a lot of things, a lot of the agriculture, some of the animals definitely were exhibiting behaviors that I felt like doing, like just laying there and flopping back, but they were all very well-maintained, well-watered, they were in good spirits, so how could you not be in good spirits if the animals were in good spirits? We got to see the county building, which looked beautiful this year. There was a really nice gallery walk there that highlights each town when you go through, and I was able to take some footage of some of the different departments, so you can learn a lot about the inner goings-on here in Sussex County by going there, and then what your home municipality and other municipalities have to offer. So I'd like to thank the staff who set that up, and Mike Richards as well, for, for his leadership and guidance, because it's a really beautiful, really, really beautiful layout there this year, and record numbers of attendees thus far. That leads me to what had happened last night, as you're aware, the majority, vast majority of Sussex County lost power due to an incident where there were downed high-tension powerlines on Route 80 around mile marker 32, fell on some vehicles, caused some brush fires, so the commute was delightful. If you commute like I do, the commute was truly delightful home. However, I can say that the county jumped directly into action. We had updates consistently. Thank you to our confidential assistant, Christina Marks and Sam Gabriel. Thank you to John Lovell for his constant contact, and to the Office of Emergency Management, Sheriff Strata. We were able to get some pretty timely updates from JCP&amp;L. Sussex Rural Electric is always very good at their communication. They worked quickly in sweltering heat to get our power on. I believe the entirety of the county was restored no later than 11:30 last night, so we were looking at about seven hours in total for the worst situations of not having power. Our local emergency response was great. We had many different municipalities offer cooling centers, especially, we know, in the oppressive heat, for those who are ill, for our elderly, for those with young children, it can be very dangerous. And literally, within an hour or so, we had cooling stations that were established and got that information out to the public, so I just want to say thank you to everybody who aided in that effort, and also the crews from JCP&amp;L and Sussex Rural Electric, who really hustled in really, really hot conditions to get our residents' power again. The next topic that I would like to discuss is two state updates, or, or things that impact us, per se, up here in the Northwest, but are being decided or debated at the state level. As you recall, this board had had multiple discussions regarding the designation of Delaware Water Gap as a national park. The board stood in, in opposition to that for multiple reasons and had asked for further information. Well, a press release was released last week. It was entitled Delaware River National Park and Lenape Preserve Map Proposal Released with a Sustainable Management Plan for the Redesignation as a Park for All Americans. And it was with great excitement that the Alliance for the Delaware River National Park and Lenape Preserve announced the long-awaited release. It was long-awaited, because they operated shrouded in darkness and silence over it, and just as we suspected, one of the most severe limitations of this designation is, again, including a total of 9,760 acres that would be restricted to hunting. So it's about 70,000 acres, there's about 50, I want to say 56,000, 57,000 acres that would then remain, but, but what's notable is that the majority of the huntable land that is now going to be restricted is right here in New Jersey. So again, really, really terrible, terrible news, based upon our wildlife overpopulation and what we've been discussing as of late. If you recall, I mean, this, this proposal is definitely a very tired, decades-old push to have prestige, to be called a national park. They claim that a park designation would allow a historical or cultural center to be established. Nothing is preventing a historical or cultural center from being established now, exactly as it is. So we live in a state with an administration that consistently restricts hunting, which then affects the people, specifically in Northwest New Jersey, in many, many negative ways. So it amazes me how these political leaders and alleged environmental experts continue to make decisions that cause greater harm to sustainability and conservation in the state than following sound wildlife management. And this takes me to my next point. You may be aware, I, I keep a close eye on bear encounters here in Sussex County and in the state. We know they have increased sharply. So there was a meeting, a public meeting, held yesterday at 10:00 a.m., the New Jersey Fish and Game Council. It was a public meeting, please keep that in mind as I share this information with you. So in this meeting, the council reported different bear encounters and what those numbers are. And there's Category 1 bears, those are the most severe situations with bear encounters. They include activities such as aggression, agricultural damage, attempted home entry, or home entry, property damage greater than $500, a protected hive, protected livestock, or vehicle entry. So those bears are considered Category 1. Now, in June, it was reported that there were 20 incidents across the state. Well, for the months, the next two months, because they, they don't hold a meeting in July, so this was an August meeting, so this spans two months, there are 68 reported Category 1 bear encounters, but wait till you get a load of this one. 32 of the 68 were in Sussex County, and 19 were in Warren County. So 75% of Category 1 incidents happened in Sussex and Warren Counties. They have euthanized nine bears so far. They've set about 30 or so traps, and the problem is only increasing more and more and more, with no action from this, this governor. Very, very flaccid response continues out of Trenton from Governor Murphy with, with little, little acknowledgement of what's happening up here with us. Now, this is where it gets interesting. Today, Christina Marks contacted the Fish and Wildlife Bureau of Wildlife and Bear Management Division, attempted to get a hard copy of this data and these numbers, because this information came to us via an attendee. So we reached out to have a state response, asking for comment on what had happened, and this may shock and surprise you, but we hit a roadblock. And again, the state refused to release what was released in a public meeting, which I found a little nutty, but typical of this administration. They delayed us, they confirmed whether we might have to submit an Oprah request to get the very public information from the report that was shared, because usually, these meetings must be like a nothing burger, where nobody goes, nobody pays attention, it flies under the radar. But when they figured out who is inquiring for this information, and it was the County of Sussex inquiring about the bear encounter information, as it increases, these, these attacks and incidents increase, all of a sudden, it became an Oprah issue. And we know quite well, due to the nursing homes, how frequently the State of New Jersey responds to our requests for information via Oprah. We have a better chance of Jesus coming to one of these meetings and taking a seat in the front row than them having a timely response to anything we ever ask for. It's outrageous, it's disgusting, and the lack of transparency continues, and the nice thing is, we have a wide berth, a wide web of individuals who are willing to report this information back to us, because we do not have the current administration in Trenton looking out for the best interest of our residents. So this story is to be continued as we hold our breath for the Murphy administration to release information to us regarding these bear encounters. I, I can't even envision that over two months, there were over 30 aggressive bear encounters between Sussex County residents, and this governor refuses to sign the comprehensive Black Bear Management Policy. I'm at a loss for words, and thank you, Christina, for enduring that nonsense today with the state. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Fantasia. Commissioner Yardley.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with the tribute to the troops and the quilts of valor, which is a very great, very nice ceremony this morning honoring our veterans, and was glad to see that we had a good showing by our commissioners. Couple of comments. Since the nursing home is closing, are we still going to get an Attorney General's investigation report? And I, I am getting the feeling that it's one of those things that, I guess if we ignore it, or the state, I guess the governor ignores it, it's not going to happen. We have waited for this report, the county has participated and provided information to the Attorney General, and we just can't seem to get a report. And we also would like next, at our next meeting, to have an update on our Oprah requests, where we are with that. These are the things that we have to put up with as commissioners, things that we want, things that we would like to provide to the public, and I guess if the state of New Jersey, that was the Department of Environmental Protection, Division of Fish and Game, that had a meeting?
That was the New Jersey Fish and Game Council.
So I, I guess they set the precedent for the state, so does that mean we don't have to, we could just tell people here, go away and not provide information? I find it incredible that we are in an era where government, and it just seems rampant when you look at the news, just don't have to provide it, and we're supposed to have an open and public forum for the, the public. Just a couple items. Senior Services Care Group, there'll be a meeting for, on August 16th, at 5:00 to 6:30 P. M. in Hopeakon Community Resource and Wellness Center. There'll be a Child Health Conference, August 16th also, 9:00 a.m. to 12:30 P. M. at the Office of Public Health Nursing. There'll be a health check in, from 2:00 to 4:00 on August 16th at the Office of Public Health Nursing. This is a clinic that offers vaccines for adults and school-age children. There's no fee for the vaccines if uninsured or underinsured. It's one of the nice things we do here. There's a public health clinic for women on Thursday, August 18th, 4:00 to 7:00. And a couple rabies notes. There were 85 domestic or wild animal bites reported and investigated by the Health Department, and give me a range of the bites. There were 32 dog bites, 10 cat bites, 14 bat bites, or bat encounters, I guess, not necessarily bites, four raccoon bites, a horse bite, a fox bite, a deer bite, I don't know how the deer bite, a rat bite, and a groundhog bite. So some, those are some of the variations of things that have to be investigated by the Health Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Yardley. Deputy Director Carney.
Thank you, Director. I just wanted to touch, before I begin with my comments, on, on what Dawn was talking about, Commissioner Fantasia was talking about, with the bear. There's 30, 33 Class 1 incidents? Is that what you said, 33?
32.
Let me take a look here. Sussex was 32, Warren was 19.
I find that hard to believe, 32. That's, that's reported, right? I mean, I can tell you alone, you can make that 33, because I've had a problem with the bear, coming into my house, destroying screens, that's not even talking about eating my kids' rabbits, but nevertheless, you know, we live in Sussex, and not everybody reports incidents, so I would guarantee that's a double number, if not tripled. So just want to throw that out there before I begin. I'll start with my NJTPA, Morse Canal Greenway Project, Projects Process. Progress continue to be made on a number of projects along the Morse Canal Greenway, which runs 102 miles from Phillipsburg to Jersey City, through Sussex County and Stanhope and Waterloo. In Sussex County, the Waterloo Trail is probably the longest stretch of the Morse Canal Greenway, running about five miles, miles from Waterloo Village and Stanhope to Bilby Road. This is one of the most-walk sections of the Greenway along the Meskeneckon River. Can you talk today? The Canal Society is in the process of developing a walking guide for the section of Greenway in hopes to help it, help have it completed, and their webs, and on their website by this fall. The NJTPA is in the process of developing an active transportation plan for the region. The goal of this plan, which is currently under development, is to help establish a safe and functional region network of pedestrian and bicycle facilities to better connect where people live and where they want to go. Active transportation facilities include sidewalks, street crossings, bicycle lanes, trails, which Sussex County has many of, and other elements that provide safe and convenient opportunities for physical active travel. The Active Transportation Plan will help to improve the pedestrian and cyclone experience in the North Jersey region through analyzing data to identify the communities that suffer, suffer heavier burdens, such as higher crash rates, surveys, and interactive maps that help inform where pedestrians, cyclists, and other non-motorized travelers encounter safety problems, missing connections on other travel barriers, proposing and prioritizing projects to address gaps in the regional pedestrian and bicycle network, offering guidance for funding and implementing improvement projects, and promoting active transportation through education about the health and environmental benefits of walking and biking. There's a survey and interactive map that people can access on the NJTPA's website under the Active Transportation Plan. At some point, I brought this up in the last meeting, the NJTPA is going to ask for a resolution of supportive lack of want to cut. I'm not exactly sure when that's going to be, but again, keep that on your radar. Just an update on a bridge in Frankfurt, D-05- Just an update on a bridge in Frankfurt, D-05 Bridge Upgrades. Construction is continuing on the bridge on County Route 655 Morse Turnpike. Northbound headwall modifications are complete and southbound headwall modifications are scheduled to begin tomorrow. The work zone, which is controlled by temporary traffic signals and a single lane, two-way alternate traffic pattern will be shifted to the southbound lane tomorrow as well. I was also at the fair with Commissioner Fantasia on Sunday, was there Friday to work in the fair. Sussex County building was great, all our agencies did a great job, it was really nice to walk in there, I was impressed. We had the municipality boards up there, the contest, this year we had places for 123 and the Choice, People's Choice Orange, which was nice, a little something different than we had in the past. So it was very, very nice. So kudos to everybody who put forth the effort to make it as nice as it was. I personally put four pounds on on Friday night, eating my way through the fair, kind of again on Sunday, but all's good, so if you guys haven't visited the fair yet, please do that. The salute today was very, very nice, as Commissioner Space said. Kudos also to Lorraine Hent for the work that you do for the veterans. I mean, every time the agencies from Sussex County do something, it's like, it doesn't get any better, second to none. So really, really good job. Very nice to hear, it's very appreciative, and I get rid of all my pins today. I went to my post on the way home and people were very thankful, so thank you again. That's all I have.
Thank you Deputy Director Carney. Thanks to all the commissioners for those really informative reports, and thanks to all who are joining us this evening. We have a lot on our agenda, I will keep my report brief. I just have to talk about what Commissioner Fantasia has talked about with the latest bear numbers. I 100% agree with what she said. To Commissioner Carney's point, that number really reflects reported incidents to the DEP. What it doesn't reflect is incidents reported to the police. It doesn't reflect incidents we've reported to our neighbors via our Ring apps, and it certainly doesn't reflect the amount of actual incidents that we have had. I think many people, like Commissioner Carney, has had an experience like himself, or others like myself, know somebody who has with an attempted bear break-in, like myself, with my parents down the street, it is happening everywhere. There must be action taken right now to protect our residents from this threat that we can protect ourselves against if it is taken seriously enough by the state. I know this commissioner board will do everything in its power to ensure that, and I think as Commissioner Fantasia has alluded to, we are well past time for that, and we need to do that now. As Commissioner Fantasia and others have mentioned, yesterday seemingly all of the county lost power, and that was an interesting experience for sure, for a duration of time due to an accident outside of the county that caused main sources of the power to go down in Sussex County. Nearly all of it was restored, restored quickly, and during that time, the county was in contact with our JCPN representatives, along with our Office of Emergency Management. I'd like to thank all of them and their teams for their quick action after that unfortunate accident. I know we have JCPN here this evening to say a few words, really, really thank you and your team for what you did yesterday, and we really appreciate it. One item on our agenda tonight that I just wanted to point out is the award of a contract to a consulting business to help the county with small business assistance support. I'm really, really excited about this initiative. This company will work with the county to help us deliver world-class business assistance to Sussex County so we can help get the right help to our business community as efficiently and as quickly as possible. That is a big step in this process to do that, and certainly, I think we are now weeks away from getting something up on the ground. And finally, as every commissioner has mentioned, I think the commissioner board's having a lot of fun with it. The Sussex County Fair is here, it runs through August 13th. If you haven't headed over to the fairgrounds yet, please be sure to check it out. I took my girlfriend for the first time last year, and she moved here in Sussex County, and I don't think it had anything to do with me, I think it had a lot to do with her experiences at the Sussex County Fair, that's how good it is. So with that, I will conclude my reports. We will move to item 10 on our agenda, which is the approval of our consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda?
I make the motion.
Commissioner Yardley moves, Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Motion carries. Item 11 is the approval of our minutes from July 13th through our last executive session and special meeting on August 3rd. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting, special meeting, and executive session meetings?
Still moved.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Motion carries. Item 12 on our agenda is our appointments under resignations. We have one. Is there a motion to adopt 12A resolution?
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Motion carries. Item 13 on our agenda is our resolutions portion of our agenda. For now, I will ask for a motion to adopt Resolutions A through R so that I can read Resolution S after. Is there a motion to adopt Resolutions 13A through R?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Terry, can you please call the roll for 13A through R?
Director Fasano.
Yes.
Commissioner Space.
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley.
Yes.
Commissioner Carney.
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia.
Yes.
Item carries. Resolution 13S was amended slightly. The title of that amended resolution will read authorizing amendment to the agreement between the County of Sussex and Jersey Professional Management for Temporary Interim County Administrator Services from May 24, 2022 through September 16, 2022, and the estimated amount of $19,000. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 13S as amended?
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? Terry, can you please call the roll?
Director Fasano.
Yes.
Commissioner Space.
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley.
Yes.
Commissioner Carney.
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia.
Yes.
Item carries. Item 14 on our agenda, we had a request to separate one of our items out, so for now, I'm going to ask for a motion for 14A through F for speech.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second for 14A through F?
Second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? Terry, can you please call the roll for 14A through F?
Director Fasano.
Yes.
Commissioner Space.
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley.
Yes.
Commissioner Carney.
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia.
Yes.
Item 14G will take separately. Is there a motion for item 14G?
Still moved.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? Terry, can you please call the roll for 14G?
Director Fasano.
Yes.
Commissioner Space.
Abstain.
Commissioner Yardley.
Yes.
Commissioner Carney.
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia.
Yes.
Item carries. Is there a motion for 14H through K?
So moved.
The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders of bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that the adoption of said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. We have a motion, we have a second for 14H through K. Any discussion? Terry, can you please call the roll?
Forgive me, I didn't hear the second.
I was the second, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. Roll call Director Fasano.
Yes.
Commissioner Space.
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley.
Yes.
Commissioner Carney.
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia.
Yes.
Item carries. Onto our financial portion, our first resolution 15A. Do we have a motion to approve the bills list?
Making a motion?
Commissioner Yardley moves. Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? Terry, can you please call the roll for item 15A?
Director Fasano.
Yes.
Commissioner Space.
Abstain.
Commissioner Yardley.
Yes.
Commissioner Carney.
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia.
Yes.
And item 15B is Resolution B, the payment of bills list B. Do we have a motion to approve bills list B?
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yardley seconds. Any discussion? Terry, can you please call the roll?
Director Fasano.
Yes.
Commissioner Space.
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley.
Yes.
Commissioner Carney.
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia.
Yes.
Item 16, our personnel agenda will be tabled pending further discussion tonight in executive session. The board may take action after executive session tonight, so that will be tabled for now. Item 17 on our agenda is our administrative report. Mr. Lovell.
Thank you very much Commissioner. First of all, I'd like to introduce the public of our acting, at the time, and that will enjoy the presentation. Congratulations. And I'd also like to tell you a story that I received a phone call from JCPN yesterday in Warren, and it was attempting to touch with me, make contact, and the purpose really was to introduce our new representative to Sussex County. About the time I think that stroke to get it out to all commissioners, name, address, phone number, dispatch number, email address, it was about the time that we were starting to flip away in Sussex County. It's my clerk and I used to introduce Richard Fitz, and a few words to say, he's recently started years managing JCPN. He's lived this county, and Jackie Expanova's ex notes that have served us well over the years. I know Jackie, she served in Warren County as well, and so I'm pretty sure she's at this town. And it just must have been a terrible luck, we made that contact, and we shared that information with the person who was in front of you right here, so she could call you a few times as well. But we really appreciated it, and it was a pleasure, and we'd like that on in our county. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner. Thank you for having me, and yeah, I'm going to go to the floor. I just wanted to just talk to myself, everyone here. As John mentioned, I'm a PNC, I'm a rep for the, for the, for Sussex County, and then the Department of Labor County. Jackie, yes, she's still working, she's in the, developing a position manager for our state, she's still overseeing the entire state, or our assigned areas. She's still a little bit of a, for operations, but I'll give her background about myself. I'll try to keep her, I've had a good job in years, but essentially, I started off with standing, so I'm just going to go through here. During standing, I was in court authority, I was assigned to, several, the anti-pack system, so I spent a lot of time in court authority, essentially, during standing, I was standing, I was covering, even his office, dealing with specific standions. So I joined the others, and I'm in a, in a position over to the federal office, I explained to him, he was about four happy, he was very, very proud of us, so, of course, four years or so, that's that, nice and smart, so it's helping with the transition, donors who are in the emergency, and then I can just, maybe, take over, make the final step over the last, so we just start with JCPN, and then you like, so this is a path to my microphone, and then, then both of you guys, your patients, and then try to figure out where we go through, and we're finding information, and then, so, if there's anything I can use for, for anyone, I think this is kind of, I'm getting out, everyone has my contact information, you know, here for me, if we need bad news or good news, really just need the good news. I don't have the information, beginning with how this could be possible. Just a little touch on last night, what transpiration, we kind of ran it off, where you have to run around here. Essentially, it was the transmission line, it was actually a static line, there wasn't a power transmission line. Transmission lines run.
You know what? It would be really helpful, I think, if you would go, if you go to the microphone.
Sure.
Thank you Commissioner. So it was a static line that was affected last night, and what the static line does is it essentially runs above our transmission lines from tower to tower. The static line is really a protector for the transmission line, it does things like absorb the lightning strikes when they do occur. In terms of what happened last night specifically, we're still investigating the cause of why the static line essentially failed, resulting in the outage, but all said, all said last night, it took roughly three and a half, four hours to get the majority of the county back up and running by 7:00 PM. The majority of that time was actually spent by our crews inspecting for damage. It's one of our first priorities as, you know, as a company, is to inspect our transmission lines for any potential damage out there, and to also make it safe for our crews. So once we were able to complete our damage assessments and then come up with a restoration plan, the restoration work itself took a couple hours at most for the majority of the county. The last three remaining towns last night did trickle on roughly around 10:15, 10:30 last night, and that was a different substation that was essentially being flipped back on once the repairs were made, but they were impacting Augsburg, Franklin, and Hamburg, coming off of the Franklin sub. So those were the last three towns in the county that were able to get power back on. Again, you know, all said and done, it probably took seven hours or so from the start of the event until the conclusion of the event last night, and like I mentioned, we're still investigating the root cause of that static wire being down, so as soon as I have any information to share, I'll do that with everyone.
Thank you Richard, and thanks so much for coming here tonight, thanks so much for all your effort yesterday, and it's true, what John Lovell said is, the commissioners got an email saying we have a new representative from JCPN, and the power went out. So we got to know each other quite well yesterday, and I appreciate all you've been doing for us.
Yeah, thank you, and when I saw John's number pop up twice, I know the second call wasn't going to be a good one, so.
I appreciate it, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I just want to point out that I also serve as a member of the town, maybe, Harps, a little tiny town, maybe 1,400 people. I'd say we had more than 30 bear encounters this last month, it was the number one topic that I've been.
Thank you John. Item 18, County Council Report. Katie, do you have anything for us today?
Not this evening.
Thank you Katie. Item 19 is unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Item 20 is new business. Do we have any new business tonight?
I have something that I would like to ask, we've done it before. This year, our Queen of the Fair was crowned, her name is Jolise Gray, she is Ms. Byram. She's quite an interesting background, she's a senior studying international relations at Notre Dame of Maryland University, and she is actually a program analyst and National Defense Fellow. She has defended two senior theses that had to do with implications of both Chinese and Russian propaganda and disinformation campaigns. Her second thesis study was the adoption of an offensive American cyber posture, and her goals after graduation are to work in the defense industry and for the Department of Defense. So she is a graduate of Sussex Tech, our Technical High School of 2019. So like I said, that, all of the Queen of the Fairs that we've had in the past capture our interest, they all bring something unique to the table. I would like to recognize her and invite her to our next meeting for a formal recognition. Hopefully, we can get her before she goes back for her senior year of college, we can get her here at our next meeting. So if that's good with everybody, can we issue the invitation?
Is that good with everybody? Good with us Don, absolutely.
Perfect.
Congratulations to Ms. Byram.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Okay, item 21 on our agenda is our second public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes, three minutes or less regarding non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and maintain a six feet social distance with other attendees, and when you arrive, state your name and municipality for the record. Is there a motion to open the floor for public comment this evening?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Motion carries, and the floor is now open to the public.
Kieran McMarra, Frieden Township. Director, Deputy Director, Commissioners, Clerk, everyone else. As some of you may already know, my name is Kieran McMarra. It's my distinct privilege to represent the men and women of PBA Local 138.
It's my distinct privilege to represent the men and women of PBA Local 138. Though it took much longer than I believe either side would have liked, I'm happy to, and I think you all have already beat me to the punch, announce tonight that negotiations between the Sheriff's Unit and the county have concluded, and we expect to sign the mutually ratified CNA within the week. I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners for their assistance during this process. I'd also like to thank Director DeRezi and CFO Yetter, who have had to deal with many, a great, a great many, excuse me, phone calls and emails from me when I was perhaps not at my most eloquent. Also, I'd like to thank Sheriff Mike Strata, whose constant support and tireless assistance was vital to the continuation of these negotiations. Finally, I'd like to thank the men and women of the PBA Sheriff's Unit, who placed their faith in both myself and our negotiation team, and have never once wavered when asked to make temporary sacrifices for the promise of a resolved CNA that benefits the whole unit. I am, as always, humbled. So in closing, again, thank you all. Thank you all specifically for approving the resolution R tonight, and let's not do this again for quite some time, shall we? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard?
I'll make a motion to close.
Commissioner Yardley moves to close public comment, return to regular business. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries. Item 22 on our agenda is our reminders, and as always, our reminder is to please check the county website at sussex nj.us for the latest meeting schedules and updates from the county. Item 23 is our executive session reading, and I will ask Terry to please read this item into the record.
Whereas the subject matters about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B, and whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B and NJSA 10:4-13, that the Board at this time enter into an executive session from which the public shall be excluded, and be it further resolved that the general nature of the subjects to be discussed relate to the following item authorized by NJSA 10:4-12B as designated, item number eight, matters relating to employment relationship topics, personnel, labor contracts. Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality, and be it further resolved that upon completion of the business for which the Board has entered into executive session, the Board shall reconvene and resume its meeting open to the public, and be it further resolved the Board expects to take formal action?
May take.
May take formal action after returning from executive session.
Thank you, Terry. Is there a motion to adopt the executive session resolution and enter into executive session this evening?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yardley seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening. Perfect. Okay, thank you so much. I would like a, we did a motion to adjourn from executive session and return to regular business. We're now in regular business, and what item that we have is the item that we tabled, which is our personnel agenda of August 10, 2022. So do I have a motion to adopt the personnel agenda?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? Katie, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Director Pisano.
Yes.
Commissioner Space.
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley.
Yes.
Commissioner Carney.
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia. Yes.
Item passes. Any other items tonight? Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yardley seconds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Meeting is over. Thank you so much for staying.[1794.32]